Good evening, everybody. The mayor, Fuentes, won't be here tonight. I guess he forgot who we're having to be... I'm just saying that, you know. I kind of forget how to do this. I don't do it very often. I'd like to open up regular city council meeting for October the... like, the twentieth?
Fifteenth.
I'm just messing.
Oh.
October the fifteenth. We'll have invocation by myself and preservations by Mr. Obama. Please stand up. Oh, Lord, bless our community of Pecos and Reeves County. As we gather today in your presence, we give... please give us the strength and knowledge to make the right decisions for our community. Lord, bless and protect all our first responders and our men and women in the armed forces. Lord, in closing, we want to thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon this community. But if you could just send us a little bit of water, rain, it would be greatly appreciated. In the Lord's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, Miss Higginson. First item in the chamber is called order. We had the invitation, the preservations, and then public comments. Do we have any comments?
The mayor, council, there were no public comments in the day this week.
Thank you. Lord, follow with the consent agenda. I need to approve the minutes of September twenty-four regular city council meeting, approve the expenditure report, approve September twenty-twenty PD call logs, and approve minutes of September twenty-first, twenty-twenty four B P E D C board meeting.
So, do you know if we're still giving out those refunds and the water bills?
Uh, as far as I'm aware, we've issued all those that we know of.
I see two payouts for the sports complex. So we have a little update.
At this point in time, the baseball complex is ahead of schedule and under budget, which is where you always want to be on a major project. Um, people that want to drive by down Teno One Eighty can see some significant progress. Um, the subcontractor that's putting the turf down is supposed to start working on the first build next week, so we should see some green showing up, uh, next week. So projects move along very, very well, and we're happy with the progress.
It's...it looks...it's our past by looks larger, the whole project, than what I expected.
It's completed project.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. I see we made a payment to Tyler Technologies. I read where the county's having a little bit of trouble with their...
Sixty-one.
I've been hacked. Do we have all that covered?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just make sure.
We're taking it every day to make sure that there's nothing...
That's not bad.
Everything's really good right now, and we have plenty of backups.
Thank you. You did a good job. Any more questions?
You're good into the limit? Mayor Potem and council make a motion to approve C. You can send agenda, uh, E-one, E-two, E-three, and E-four.
Wait, one second. Second, both. Motion is being made by Councilwoman Baca to accept the consent agenda as presented and seconded by Councilwoman Tohio. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signal by same eye. All those opposed, same side. Motion passes. We have the first item.
Where were you approved on Friday?
I'm not sure. See, I have the same vote.
Not consent? So why are you there? We're on F-one.
F-one.
Um, F-one. Evening, everybody. This is our money late. Discuss consent amendment of water lease contract with Castle Peak LLC, Mr. Putton?
Mayor and council, you may remember that a year ago, uh, y'all approved a water lease agreement with Castle Peak for them to try to sell water or produce water or salt water from city properties, uh, and be able to give the city a twenty-five percent royalty for the sale of that. The last year hadn't been a great year, of course, out here in the oil patch, but it's starting to look a little bit brighter. Mr. Jake Felton with Castle Peak is here. They wanted to make a slight amendment to the contract. Uh, the contract a year ago said that all the water the city produces, they have the right to sell it, but they have to give the city a royalty. Uh, but it didn't specifically say effluent or water that we produce, but then we put into our sewer plant. And so they wanted to make sure that the amendment specifically includes the word affluent, but it would be sale...the sale would be for the same royalty rate, and the city has the right to set the amount that we would let them have, if any. In other words, we're not obligated to give them all or any of the affluent amount, and we have to reserve the right to keep it back if we wanted to use it for irrigation purposes or other green purposes here in Pecos. Mr. Felton?
Good evening. Um, as y'all remember, about a year ago, the...we were on a strict deadline because we had till September first because of a house bill that was being passed in order to, um, have the right, and the city of Pecos to have the right, to, um, lease to a third party in agreement to actually be compensated for our, uh, infrastructure, any sale of the produced water, or it was going to become the property of the operator. Um, due to that timeframe, uh, I think there was a few parts of the lease that maybe were a little bit ambiguous. And going back and looking at it, we just wanted to make sure that we nailed down the direct intent of what it is that we need to do to extract the most value, not only for us but for the city and our operations moving forward. Um, and I think it's also very important because in the sale of produced water, there's recycling, we're going to need blend water, um, and as we progress in time and environmental issues become more important, especially with some of the bigger operators, um, and most evitably some of the ones that are coming in are going to take over operations with and around the city, it's going to be a very important aspect, um, in the success of our operations and, um, in return, the royalty rates and the income will be coming to the city as well.
So y'all might remember from a year ago, the bill he's referring to was a bill that would have vested away from the owner of land the right to get a loyalty of the produced water that comes out of the ground with the oil. By having the contract in place a year ago, it reserved that back to Pecos, which is leased to them, but it means that if oil is produced from Pecos lands and that produced water is sold, that Pecos is entitled to the royalty.
Essentially, what was happening is because water midstream companies were coming in and paying operators for dedications, large sums of money for this produced water. Well, produced water is property of the landowner, so there was a little, you know, it was kind of ambiguous as to who actually owned it, and so they went in and amended this...with this house bill and stated who actually owned it, but they gave landowners the opportunity to make an agreement with a third party by September first in order to actually possess ownership and have the right to be compensated for that water or revert to the operator. So that's where we came in and made a deal with you guys, um, and we're looking forward to, once things kind of pick back up as I think they are, to, uh, start building things out. Any questions?
Any questions? It's a different kind of question I'm going to ask you.
Oh, yeah.
What do you foresee with the future of the oil field industry?
Um, it's kind of a loaded question, but I think that the reality is, is that, um, if you just look at, uh, markets and economies in general, that everything and everyone wants to make transitions very quickly, and that's just not realistic. Um, I think that the...in a perfect world, you have a hybrid of, um, you know, more, uh, green energy and...but the truth of the matter is, is in order to mine the resources necessary for that to take place, you're going to need hydrocarbons. Um, so I think we're going to live in a world where, yes, we're going to progress and become greener and cleaner, but throughout that process, I think hydrocarbons are going to play a very important role in that process. Um, and I think you're...we're going to see in more, uh, bigger affluent cities, yes, they're going to kind of trend away from necessarily your traditional, uh, you know, hydrocarbon functionality of a society, but globally, I don't think we're going to peak anytime in the next several decades.
Good answer. Thank you.
Someone understands what you're asking. You've already approved the water. They're just amending it, so...
It's just amended. The contract has already been approved by the city. Clarify so that they can have a better ability to essentially market some of the water to people like Chevron that like to be able to tell...
Right, for example, Chevron...
People on Wall Street that we're using recycled water and we're using the toilet water.
Like Chevron won't even use...they won't even use, for example, fresh water that a landowner may set, just a rancher in town may sell to a smaller outfit such as, I don't know, Centennial or Concho. Chevron won't even use that water because from a...from a market perspective, they want to be able to tell the public that they're being environmentally friendly, which they've, I guess, in a way are, and not using...they're using, uh, brackish water and not the same quality of water that some of these other operators are, which is a good sentiment to portray to the public, and that's something that I think that we could definitely take advantage of.
Keith, I'm running your motion to approve amendment.
I make the motion now to accept amendment of water lease contract with Castle Peak LLC as presented by the gentleman, Mr. Putton, in our attorney.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
You have a motion by Councilman Deere, second by Councilman O'Donoghue, to approve amendment to the water lease contract with Castle Peak. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to ask you to discuss consider a zone change request made by Maria Jurado from C-one Local Retail District to R-two Medium Living Family Residence District on property commonly referred to as two oh five East D Street, legally described as blocks twenty-three to twenty-seven, block sixteen, NP Pecos. Mr. McKinney?
Mayor, council, Donnie McKinney, Director of Environmental Services. Before we get into this, I'd just like to remind the council of our community-wide cleanup this weekend. Y'all moved through the public comment so fast that I didn't get a chance to stand up. Uh, we are having our community-wide cleanup this weekend, Saturday from eight to noon. I invite everyone to come out if they can, just have some fellowship and help clean up Pecos, so...
Where's the...where's the...
We're going to meet here at City Hall. We'll have grabbers and gloves and bags, and we'll also have some doughnuts and coffee and some clutches and things, so we'll meet here at eight o'clock, hand out all the equipment, and, uh, we will have a little path that you can go on, but if you know a certain part of the city that you think needs some trash picked up, uh, you can go anywhere in the city and just let us know where you're at so we can go by and pick up your bags, so... And now on to this item. Sorry to throw that into this, but, uh, this first one was a request to rezone five lots. She owns this whole half-block. She wanted right in the middle to rezone five blocks. Planning and zoning commission recommended that we not approve that because then there would be some residential right in the middle of all that commercial. Um, they...I did ask if they would entertain if she wanted to redo the whole block so that it keeps the lines clean. That's part of the problem with Pecos is we've rezoned some things, and now there's a little piece over here. It does a butt to whatever zone, but then everything around it is a different zone. So they did recommend that we deny this one, um, with the opportunity for her to come back and request to rezone that whole half-block and keep it kind of clean.
That...that's on the north side of town?
Yes, sir.
The other side of the park?
Yes, sir.
None of you in committee denied it when we come to the council?
Because y'all actually had the final decision on planning and zoning. BOA is a quasi-judicial board. Whatever they say is final, planning and zoning recommends to the council.
Nothing around there is, right now, zoned?
Well, across this street, across Ash Street, is zoned residential, but, so, I mean, it a butt here, but it would come over here and just be a little spot. So if they rezoned it all, then it would be contiguous with the rest of them. Wouldn't be a little cutout in the middle of that commercial zone.
But do they want it commercialized?
They're...they're trying to make that part residential because they wanted to put trailer houses there. The...it's all commercial right now. They were requesting to take five lots and make it residential. Yes, sir.
That's right there in front of us, Cedar Street. This is...
It's one street off of Cedar. It's actually two streets off.
Yeah, Cedar's right there, and so they're actually facing Ash.
Yeah, they're...they're facing Ash. Yeah, Cedar, it's one street off of...
They want to make the residential.
That...that's what they were requesting. And I did speak with Ms. Juardo after this and presented that to her, and she said she'd get back to me. She didn't know for sure if they wanted to rezone the whole half-block block, so...
And she's not here today, right? She doesn't?
She is not.
So then we have that little section just residential, the rest would be commercial?
Yes, sir.
Like you said earlier...
But then you...then you have all these other people around there that may come back and say, "I want to commercialize too now," because they have empty lots. All those people are out there having the lots for trailers and whatever they want to build out.
Is there anything on either side of this little space that she wants to make?
No, this is all...
She said my dollars.
And she says from here to here is hers. Now, the guy that owns this lot did come to that meeting and said he would think about asking to rezone that. I was like, "Well, good luck, because that's on Cedar. That's most likely not going to happen." So...I told him he could ask, but that being on Cedar, I didn't foresee that being an option.
The council, I remember that when you rezone just part of a block, in this way, if it's just a quarter of the block, it's really called spot zoning. It's disfavored. You're really going to keep things uniform, uh, as far as normally, that's what you want to do for a city plan.
I mean, I remember we did a little bit of any Cedar Street because of the businesses there. We gave them six months or whatever we did for them, but again, that was businesses that were helping. I was just thinking that, who...who's the next person across the street or over going to come back and say, "Well, you did it for one, now you'll pay the other." Pandora's box, and we're going to do it for everybody else.
It would be like all sets right there, you know, all sets faces Cedar, commercial, and then on the other side is...other side of the alley is all residential, and it's on that same street on Ash, on this side. So we'd be having...basically having the same setup.
Which, uh, city staff doesn't really have a problem if that whole half-block was that way because there's an alley that separates it. But five lots in the middle of that block, it...I mean, it just makes the lines even harder to figure out, so...
So we all have empty, do I, or wait? I don't know which we left, but...
I think we should take the recommendation of Poney and zoning and...
I don't know.
Y'all make another form of motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation of planning and zoning and we deny, um, the zone change request made by Maria Jurado from C-one, uh, to R-two on property commonly referred to as two oh five East D Street, legally described as lots twenty-three to twenty-seven, block sixty, uh, NP Pecos, as presented by Donnie McKinney, Director of Environmental Services.
I'll second that.
I'll say.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Torio, second by Councilman Dees, to not approve zoning change as requested by Mr. Urado, presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. F3, discuss consider a zone change, sorry guys. Zone change request made by Ram Congwer for R2 medium density family residence district to C1 local retail district on property commonly referred to as 502 North Cedar Street, legally described as block 78 and lots 1 through 16 of block 79 in the Pecos.
So on this one, zoning commission did recommend approving this one. As you can see, it's right above the ones we were just talking about. This is where the old Boulder motel was, and this is already commercial, but he owns all this, and he, that's why he's asking to rezone, just so it'll be one. And Robertson Road through here is closed now, so this is basically one big tract.
Yeah, they got, they got rocks and everything that. But Robertson Road, that's a, a second road that, that hits 1216 Warren?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And y'all did approve closing that road probably a year ago. So, um, he's just trying to clean it up and make it all commercial.
This is the same gentleman that was gonna build, or he, he's just the owner of the property, but wasn't there some motel or something was gonna be built there?
They have presented some plans to us about a motel and a Taco Bell and some other retail.
I was wondering.
None of that's, none of that's happened yet, but, um, and he hasn't came back to me and said that he plans anything else yet, so. I don't know if his plans have changed because he hasn't said anything.
And that's all undeveloped property?
I'm sorry?
And that's all undeveloped property?
Yes, it is. He's, he's torn down all the Boulder motel, and if you've been by there lately, he has cleaned a lot of it up. It's, there was a big mess there for a while, but he has started cleaning that up, so.
So he doesn't wanna develop it?
It, it is my understanding that he does.
As it's all commercial, I don't know, all of a sudden he starts selling the land off for more money.
Well, I mean, that, that's a possibility, but all indications from him to me has been that he plans to develop it.
Your opinion worth, Mr. Nichols? I mean, Mr. Whittles?
Sorry, sir?
Your opinion worth?
Any for your thoughts?
Any for my thoughts? I would point you to his current project and how long it's taken on the state theater. It's the same gentleman. Uh, I've had dealings with him. Uh, I agree that he has been a good guy to clean it up, uh, but, um, my thoughts aren't, uh, for public consumption this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But you know, even if he cleans it up and gets it ready and somebody wants it, it'll be ready to go. And, and being zoned, because if it's not zoned, then somebody else can come in and, and we're gonna go through this again.
Cause next to that going north is, there's residents, right?
Yes, yeah. I'm colorblind, so I won't say what color, but all this color is R1 or R2, residents. So what, what he's requesting is to just extend this out.
And behind that, Donnie, is there, are there, is that what I'm seeing is homes, residential?
One.
Just one?
There's only one home back there right now. But all this could be potentially developed as residence.
And the zoning board?
They, they recommended approval of this one. Because it does make a contiguous line.
And where it stops, is that, that's where his boundary line is at?
Yes, ma'am.
Or does he own more?
No, that, I believe that's where his boundary line stops.
Everything else is residential pretty much around there. There's not gonna be a big request for changes after the fact anyway. As people start knocking their homes down south of the. What does council want to do?
Well, I make the motion that we approve, uh, the zone change requested by Ram Congwer for R2 medium density fa- family residential, residence district to C1 local retail district on property commonly referred to as 502 North Cedar Street, legally described as all of block 78, lots 1 through 16 of block 79 North Pecos, uh, presented by, by Donnie McKinney.
Give me a second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Sandana, second by Councilman Dees, to approve change as requested by Mr. Ram Congwer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, go on to F4. Discuss consider a plat approval request submitted by Ram Congwer for property commonly referred to as 502 North Cedar Street, legally described as for block 77, 78, and lots 1 through 16 of block 79 North Pecos, uh, Boulder Courts. Mr. Donnie?
Mayor, Council, again, Donnie McKinney, Director of Environmental Services. This is the same property that we just discussed rezoning, except now it includes all the way up to Cedar Street, and you should have a plat in your package that shows that he wants to subdivide that into five separate lots. I think it may be on your iPad, Mayor.
There is, there aren't alleys? Access?
There is alley access, yes. And, and I think he's doing this so that if he doesn't develop the whole thing, it's already split into a couple different lots that he can sell off for other commercial endeavors.
Good property. Okay, we have, council, your call.
I'll make the motion that we approve of plot approval request submitted by Ram Congwer for property commonly referred to as 502 North Cedar Street, legally described as all blocks of 77, 78, and lots 1 through 16 of block 79, North Pecos Boulder Courts, as presented by Donnie McKinney, Director of Environmental Services.
Okay, second?
I'll say.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Sandana, second by Councilman Torio, to approve request submitted by Mr. Congwer, property commonly referred to as R2 North Cedar Street. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Donnie.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we go on to F5. Discuss considering the memorandum of understanding from Crosby Flying Services to continue service as the Pecos Municipal Airport fixed base upper, operator while negotiating new contract. Mr. Nichols?
Mayor, Council, Howdy Lizzenby, Assistant City Manager. Uh, it's good to visit with you tonight. Uh, as you may know, uh, the airport is owned by the Town of Pecos City, so that makes us what's called the sponsor. But we also have a contract with Crosby Flying Services to actually operate the airport, and so they provide, uh, the staff to manage the airport, refill the flights, and manage the flight operations. The contract that we have with Crosby Flying Services actually expired at the end of September, and we're negotiating with them for a new agreement. The existing agreement had the option to just extend, but we really didn't want to extend the agreement as it was written because we feel like there's some stuff that needs to be added into it to better protect the city. And Crosby is agreeable to renegotiate, but that agreement has expired and we don't have the new agreement in place. So we're asking for a 90-day memorandum of understanding so that they will continue to operate as the fixed base operator, the FBO, for the next 90 days under the terms of the old agreement, while we finish negotiating out and we'll bring to you a new agreement for their services to continue on in the future. Uh, we are pleased with the services they're providing. Uh, we just wanna make some modifications to the terms of that agreement and bring it back to you for approval. So we're asking for you to approve, uh, staff to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Crosby Flying Services for 90 days.
90 days from today?
Yes.
We get the sign, good sign that they're willing to negotiate it, you know?
How many, 90 days from today?
Okay, 90 days from the end of September.
I was wondering if that was, if it was today or the end of the contract?
We're 15 days into it.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion that we approve entering to a 90-day memorandum of understanding with Crosby Flying Services to continue services as a Pecos Municipal Airport fixed base operator while negotiating a new contract, as presented by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Howdy Lizzenby.
Okay, second? Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Sandana, second by Councilman Bakka, to approve the entering of a memorandum of understanding with Crosby Flying Services to continue service as a Pecos Municipal Fixed Base Operator while negotiating a new contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Nick. F6, discuss consider accepting the construction of Meadowbrook subdivision and approving final payment.
Mayor, Council, Howdy Lizzenby, Assistant City Manager. Uh, it is with great joy that we bring you the news that we have completed the Meadowbrook subdivision, uh, and, uh, we're asking you to approve a final change order and the final payment application so that we can close that project out. Uh, in your packet, there should be a, a summary of the project, at least from a financial point of view. And so you'll see that the original contract is $2,352,299.09. Uh, over the course of the project, we had change order number one, which added $13,697.50. We had change order number two, which added $378,525.56. That was the addition of the proposed project, project on Sixth and Peach. We later had change order number three, which added $211,322.43. And, uh, now that we've reached the end of the project, we're actually removing that Sixth and Peach improvement. So we're taking out the 378 that was change order number two, as well as some additional items that were removed from the project at the end. And so if you approve change order number four as a deductive change order, um, and then final payment in the amount of $186,980.1, then that will close out this project.
It looks good. I've been riding around there.
They did a good job.
Yes?
Mayor, Council, uh, this has been a long, three-year project, and the reason I'm here for that is to personally thank each one of you, uh, and the administration of the city. Y'all threw in a good chunk of change on that proj- uh, project, and I'm here to say thank you very much, because we now have 72 lots over there, ready to go to do a house.
And we have approved plans for three homes already.
Yes, I sold, she had lots already, so we'll have 10 homes within 12 months.
But we've approved the plant, the building plans for three homes in that subdivision.
I might have gained money somewhere. That's a good thing, good thing. All right, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion we approve accepting the construction of Meadowbrook subdivision and approving final payment, presented by Assistant City Manager, Howdy Lizzenby.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Sandana, second by Councilman Dees, to approve the construction of Meadowbrook subdivision and approving final payment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
You know, one, one, one other thing, for now, driving around in that area, is that once they build that new store, there is a possibility we could have a through street through there unless that's private property, right? Behind, uh.
Is that, uh, it's not, is it remote?
Can I actually answer that question?
Yeah.
I'm just kinda curious because there's two properties there that my wife likes, and I thought, well, if they build this road, uh, we'll, we'll be in traffic. I don't wanna do that.
So, uh, just a second. Um, so, uh, there's the Meadowbrook subdivision, right here, that we just have been building. In our long-term transportation plan, the city has intentions of staying Oak Street, to have some sort of connection down here. Continue for yourself.
Is that the, the one that you're referring to? There's not a couple of properties, but this, this one, yeah, where the new store is.
East west.
Yep.
Yeah, so right now, we have them right here at the property line. Uh, this is a 10-acre parcel that, uh, we can require that they tie in as they develop through that area, uh, because we do want connectivity and for certain.
Okay, that would, you know how the new, the new store is being built over here on this empty? I mean, that, that probably would be just, that road would go straight, an, another avenue to getting to that, that, all those businesses right there.
Yeah, and actually has to do with our, our next item, since we're calling it, but I'll, I'll talk a little bit about, so.
You can walk to the store. You bought that property, you can walk to the store right there.
Mayor, could you please repeat who, uh, who were the motions for that lot, sir?
For which one?
For Meadowbrook?
Oh, final, Sandana first and then second, Mr. Dees.
Thank you.
F7, discuss consider renaming of W. Jackson Street to W. Elizabeth Street from the West Inn at Texas Street and the Inn, East Inn of Oak Street.
Mayor and Council, uh, this is part of us, uh, doing our future planning. Actually, as we were looking at this area, uh, we found that West Jackson Street, uh, runs right through here, and there's only, uh, a few problems with that, and that it doesn't line up with the rest of our Jackson Streets. And so we began looking at it, uh, Ms. Nichols has done a wonderful job with this, and what we're requesting tonight is actually to rename from Texas Street. It's currently already from Texas to Iowa Street called West Elizabeth. Uh, but we're requesting to go ahead and continue naming it West Elizabeth all the way through, basically what we'll end up tying into Cedar at some future point. As Councilman Sandana, Sandana pointed out, uh, we need some connectivity east-west here, and so this is part of our planning effort to, uh, continue Jackson. We're in conversations with, uh, landowners to acquire some right-of-way in here for that purpose. There's also that drainage ditch, uh, that runs right through there, that's a major drainage for the city. But back to the, the item I have specifically, uh, we, uh, it, it's a little awkward that we have the same street and three different things all in row. And so we have Jackson, Elizabeth, and Madison. Uh, we're not requesting to change Madison at this point, although we might bring that back. Uh, this one is a little bit easier because it only affects four homes. Only three of them are occupied, I believe. And two of them are actually owned by the same person. And so we're able to rename all of this with minimal impact, whereas this block, uh, impacts several homeowners. But as you can tell, up here is one section of Jackson, and when you skip a couple of blocks going south, a couple of blocks going east, and then we become Jackson again. Uh, we have someone similar with Madison where, uh, we have Madison here, you skip, uh, several blocks, and then you have another offset of Madison. Uh, we had talked about renaming this whole thing Madison, until Ms. Sider pointed out that we already have Madison offset over here, and that just messed with all of our plans. And so, uh, we are requesting to change this all to, uh, West Elizabeth. And so we are requesting to change this all to West Elizabeth. It is our hope that this will help as we're trying to, uh, clean up the map and do some future planning and also for our EMS. Uh, just to make it a little bit easier for fire, police, ambulance to all respond and learn the geography a little bit better.
So I have a question. Majority of the area that you're covering is Jackson. Why not go with Jackson Street instead of Elizabeth?
Uh, we chose Jackson because, uh, it's awkward to have the same street name that's offset by two whole blocks.
I'm sorry, did I say Jackson? Did I just say Jackson, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we have... What do you want?
Uh, so here's the high school, um, middle school.
So behind, um, Elizabeth to the north. What is that, Jefferson?
Jefferson, Jefferson, and then Jefferson.
And then another Jefferson.
Yeah, so you actually go Jackson, Jefferson, Jackson, and then back up to Jefferson, which that's not your normal for naming streets. We would almost expect, you would expect if you're following an avenue, that Adam Street, which also continues over here as the first one off of Washington, to be followed by Jackson, but instead we jump to Jefferson because it kind of lines up on your side of the high school. But we kind of flip those two. It's just awkward.
Okay.
I've always wondered why that was.
Me too.
And Mr. Jackson is not going to come up and say, why do you rename my street?
I always wondered that.
He might ask us to do it, but I think we'll be okay.
Has anybody come and asked, you know, not to do it, or?
Uh, we've had some comments from the, uh, the three or four addresses that it affects. Um, I would also recommend that as part of this, that the city just cover the cost of them getting the new driver's license. I think it's $11 to the state, uh, you know, so it's a pretty minimal, pretty minimal impact. Also in working with the 911 addressing, there's no need for them to change their house number. It's simply the street name.
Yeah.
And the majority of everybody on the Jackson Street after Elizabeth, they're facing an actual street and not, not that Jackson site.
That's correct. They're almost all facing the northwest, they're north-south streets. Just the side street. Yeah, there's just a few that are flipped.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve renaming West Jackson Street to West Elizabeth Street.
Oh. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I should read my own agenda.
Is it, oh, is it wrong?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. We, um, tonight's just public hearing. We'll need to bring this back as an ordinance on, on the next two agendas. I'm, I'm so sorry for that. And so tonight's just presentation, public hearing, see if there are any comments. I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm so used to just, let's take action, let's get something done.
Do you want to open up our public meeting right now or you should wait?
Uh, we should go ahead and open it up if, if that's all right.
Okay, I have a open for, um, anybody has a problem renaming Jackson Street to Elizabeth Street? Mr. Garcia, nothing? Anyone text us though. You're all right. Okay? John, nothing? You're good? All right, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. Go to the next one? Okay? We better go on to F8, discuss, consider resolution 20 dash 10 dash 02R, rejecting all bids for construction of the Sixth and Peach infrastructure project. That's what Howard discussed earlier, right?
Uh, this is, this is that change order. That's correct. And so at the intersection of Sixth and Peach, and I'm sorry, I, I don't remember the name of the school that used to sit there.
Erbil.
Erbil, thank you. Um, we've, uh, we bid this out with the full scope. Uh, we made sure that it had been redesigned to include everything. Uh, that was, that was part of the confusion of why it got added and then why it got taken away, um, is that not all the bid items had been included. Um, and so it was rebid, it came in over, uh, what both the EDC and the city, I believe, at least from the administrative standpoint, feel comfortable paying at this time. Uh, it certainly does not preclude us from, uh, doing it in the future. Um, and additionally, we are looking at the possibility of doing the utility install in-house with our construction crew that we've created, which would save the city a significant amount of money. Um, but because of the constraints and because the EDC board, uh, did turn down, uh, the, the option to participate, uh, I would recommend that we also reject all bids uh, for this project and put it on the shelf until we're ready to, to do it.
All right, one thing I wanted to add is we did reject the project, but what I did try to, uh, encourage my board to do is we do not have the money in the 2021 budget, but I told them that we would look at this again in the 21, 22 budget. So this project is not dead, it's just on hold for right now.
Now, was there part of the project to put back Sixth Street?
Uh, yes, so the scope of work, uh, includes cleaning the whole side of, uh, building Sixth Street to connect, uh, sidewalk, curb, gutter, all the way around, including along Sixth Street, and then water and sewer to, to serve all point for home sites.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Can I make a motion, Mayor? To reject all bids for construction at nine? I'm sorry, Sixth and Peach presented by Mr. Johnson, I see the manager.
Second? Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Teas, second by Councilman Baca, to reject all bids for construction of the Sixth and Peach infrastructure project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same side. Motion carries. Go on to F9. Discuss, consider resolution 20 dash 10 dash 02R, approving a change order to Badger B&amp;B Services in the amount of $95,033 as part of the CR404 utility project for installation of an additional sewer extension. Johnson?
Mayor and Council, uh, as you may recall, uh, we had, uh, brought back just a few meetings ago, the need for additional engineering services and surveying services uh, because we had to move a line, uh, further north in order to accommodate where the landowner had actually built their road. Uh, they had told us that it was going to be split right down the middle and then they, they built it in a different place. Uh, and so we had brought back some additional engineering and, uh, surveying services at that time. Uh, in exchange for their easement, uh, free of charge to the city, they did request that they receive, uh, services. They're looking to develop that area. Um, we want more customers, we want to be able to serve, uh, them, and this is just someone that we would end up participating in at a, a later point in time. And so we're requesting, uh, the amount of $95,033 uh, to build the extension across that roadway so that they can, uh, start building and, and become water and sewer customers.
Do we have the money?
We do. This is out of the water and sewer fund. It would come out of, uh, utility fund reserves.
Do we have the water?
We have the water. We have the water.
This is a lot where they, they built the road, not where they told us.
That's, that's the one.
And then we had to make a change for it.
That's the one, yes, sir.
404. It's F Street, right?
Yes, it's north of F Street, that's correct.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion we approve resolution 20 dash 10 dash 02R, approving a change order to Badger B&amp;B Services in the amount of $95,033 as part of the CR404 utility project for installation of additional sewer extension as presented by City Manager Mr. Seckwitz.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Sandana, second by Councilman Teas, to approve resolution 20 dash 10 dash 02R, approving change order for Badger B&amp;B Services in the amount of $95,033 as part of the CR404 utility project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same side. Motion carries. Move on to F10, discuss, consider resolution 20 dash 10 dash 03R, approving payment to High Hook in the amount of $169,839.61 for participation in the upsizing of the water line from eight-inch to 12-inch. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For those of you, uh, I have... Sorry, I got issues jumping all over. Yes, thank you. Uh, so, uh, High Hook has actually already built this line. We participated by providing the, uh, cost of the hydrants. Uh, at that time, uh, we weren't sure where we were sitting with our revenues for water and sewer. Uh, since then, the water plant's been completed. It's about a mile long. They have gone ahead and upsized it, uh, as we have requested, uh, for the benefit of future expansion as we're trying to add more customers and as we're trying to create a loop across the north part of, uh, the city. And so this creates, uh, an industrial area. And so, uh, the, the cost to upsize this is $169,839.61. Excuse me. So, uh, this is Allison Crane out here. You'll see the pretty big flag flying up there, a really nice campus. Uh, so from here on 285 all the way back to 1216 is where they ran this line. So it's right down the middle. Um, with this, uh, we already have, uh, two customers that are waiting, uh, to get access to this water line because they want to continue. And so we do already have customers waiting to receive, uh, water service out here. Um, and so, uh, we're asking simply to participate in the upsizing of that line. What we would do is we would go ahead and write a check to High Hook, uh, and then we would enter into the utility reimbursement agreement that the council had previously, uh, authorized back when they started this project. And through that utility reimbursement agreement, as lots sell in their industrial park, uh, we would accept a, a portion where basically that lot is paying for a section of that line. And, uh, we, we basically just divided it by the number of lots. And so everyone ends up paying around $34,000 to the city. The city collects that and then we turn around and write a check to High Hook for their percentage, and then we keep our percentage. So ideally, if this entire industrial park develops over 15-year period, uh, which is the maximum that we can do a URA, uh, we would be made whole and High Hook would be made whole for our investments.
Are, are we providing water also for the customers on the, what would it be, the east side of, no, the west side of 285?
Uh, that, that's who we're waiting to get connected.
Yeah, but they built some big, big buildings there.
Yes, yes.
And then behind this, this line from, so there's a 1216 to, uh, 285. There's already a bunch of, uh...
Yeah, trailers. Uh, as you recall, uh, we had a, a company about a year and a half ago that built all the way up 1216, uh, right there. Uh, then High Hook has extended it further and then come across their roadway. Uh, and so we terminate right here at this point and we just need to get them connected in.
Okay. But they got a lot of, I guess that's where their employees, a lot of nice trailers up.
Yeah, yeah. No, there's quite a bit of industrial development going on up there. Uh, this is our kind of unofficial outside city limits industrial park that's developing on its own.
We might have to enact it, Lynn.
I think we should.
So we can get taxes up. Yeah, but there, it's, uh, it's, it's really building.
It is.
Three buildings, there's two buildings on that side, oh, probably about another mile up north that, uh, they are identical. I think it's iron, I can't remember the name, but they're, they're identical buildings, right? Been a lot of money on them.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion we approve resolution 20 dash 10 dash 03R, approving payment to High Hook in amount of $169,839.61 for participation in the upsizing of water line from eight-inch to 12-inch presented by City Manager Mr. Seckwitz.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Sandana, second by Councilman Teas, to approve payment of High Hook, the amount of $169,839.61 for participation in providing on the water line from Fifth to 12th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same side. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, F11, update on 217 through 219 financials from the following offices.
Mayor and Council, uh, over various meetings, it's been requested that we, we gather this financial information for the previous three years. Um, as we delved into it, uh, we discovered that both the Chamber and the Museum are 501-3C nonprofit organizations. As such, they don't do audits the way that we do audits. And so we asked for their financials, which they both provided, uh, and those are included in your packet. Uh, obviously First Flight is a for-profit entity and we met with them a few weeks back uh, to clarify, uh, what the council had requested. Uh, we have not received those financial statements yet. Um, and they will probably request a non-disclosure agreement when they do, um, for your review. Um, they, they prefer that that not be, uh, made public. But, uh, we're waiting on that and when we receive that, we'll submit that to you as well.
All right, uh, we'll go ahead and, um, go into, uh, executive session under Texas Code 551 dash 071, 551 dash 072, 551 dash 074, 551 dash 087. We'll go ahead and close regular session. Time is 6:33.
[inaudible]
One session, time is seven eighteen. Is there anything to come before the council during executive session? No?
No.
Okay, we're going for the G this time.
We have to let, make a motion that we let our city manager continue with negotiations with the home's contract.
Home's contract. Give me a second.
I'll take one.
Okay, you have a motion by Councilman Reyes, again by Councilman Abaca, to allow the city manager to continue negotiation with...
The home's contract.
Home's contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of the folks say a sign. Motion carries. Okay, discuss items for next city council agenda. I think I have one thing. I want to discuss putting me back at the municipal court judge. We're having issues there. Since I've done it before and I thought, no, I can't continue to do this. I want the council to put me back on there. So we'll discuss that. Did y'all have a, Sarah, did y'all have a chance to discuss during the comment, the, how they did?
Oh, no, it didn't really matter. Just that we're looking for sponsors right now for, for... We had a loft for Coach the City and they wanted to do a toy drive and get back to the community, like the Schuster or Nella's loft. And so they were going to team up with the city so that he's going to provide toys. He asked if we could reach out to sponsors. Some of the lofts reached out to the community to ask if anyone wants to sponsor toys or money so that we can buy more toys. And we're going to do a toy drive here on, as part of it, it'll be December 2nd in the evening so that kids and their families can come by and pick up toys for Christmas.
Yeah, we kind of decided, we had a meeting with them a couple of times and of course, Sarah and Oscar and Heather have been really, really freaking helpful. They have so much knowledge of this stuff and how to handle it. Because they came last year because she called me and it was kind of close to a lot of things. So I kind of hooked her up with Mr. Serrano and they were able to actually buy shoes for children. They gave out over 200 pairs of shoes last year to kids. So this year, we have plenty of time and we kind of talked about it and we felt that, you know, kids are kind of living left out because right now with COVID, money is kind of tight. Money's going towards bill, money's going towards food, money's going towards... So that's kind of what drove to the toys. And I told them that I offered you guys, as well as myself, you know, for talking to us, if they have any questions and we're going to find sponsors. And of course, they came up with that idea and they're going to give sponsors and you can put a booth, you can put whatever, your banner, same as any other company that wants to put a banner out there. And, you know, we're going to be using, of course, the chamber. I think he's already reached out to you guys for the list of some of the ones that we can contact. But, you know, and that's kind of what we're looking, we're looking at, you think, the city displaying the toys by age groups up to 18, I think is what we're kind of looking at. And kind of when they come in, we have a door out, it's kind of what Oscar's saying, and, you know, pick out a toy or two or what have you. Because she's saying that they've tried toys before. She said, they get so many toys. She said, one time we had over 5,000 toys. She said, we gave every kid three toys and we still had some left. So, you know, and I want you guys to know where we're at. I want y'all to know, and I want you to participate in this council. I want the community to know that we're going to back them up. We're going to be toying with them.
Would they, would they be willing to work with Adamas and she does it over here?
Well, we didn't want to step on nobody's toes. We felt like if they want to do their thing, they don't do their thing. You know, but we are going to reach out and see if she wants to join us, same as the Sheriff's Office, same as the biker group. If they don't, that's fine. Like I said, you know, we don't want, you do your thing, you know, because again, they're known for that as well. So we didn't, we, we said, we're not going to step on them. We'll ask, but we won't push. But that's kind of what we're asking. I want to bring, every time we have a meeting, I want Sarah or Oscar or Heather to reach out, know where we're at. I don't have all the time to contact them. So I really appreciate that Seth and Howdy has allowed them to do that, you know, have some time to help and some time to contact with them because, you know, they still have stuff to do. But I really appreciate that they're doing that. And, you know, we're kind of all on toast, Seth, about using City Hall, but he was all for it. He's good for it. So, but that's just kind of, you know, in a nutshell what we're doing so far. We started having meetings. They actually flew in Tuesday, Monday?
Tuesday.
He flew in on this plane. They actually had trouble with the plane, huh, before they took off?
Yes, I think they didn't get home until about 6:00.
They had to come back, that's kind of... But he flew in and he does this for us, Kermit, Abeline, Midland, Odessa.
Big Spring.
Big Spring. So it's not just us. So that's why we're trying to work a date that he can come. And he preferred during the week and we thought that was fine too. You know, at least in the evening, I can come, no problem. So, you know, think in your minds who you all want, if there's anybody you want to ask or, you know, somebody that might not, we're going to do flyers. We have flyers right now that we send out to the businesses, but not everybody's part of the chamber. So, you know, we want to give you flyers, see if there's anybody else that you need to tell them I want. But that's kind of something that we're going to re-discuss in the audience part on our next meeting. That way everybody's updated on what we're doing. Okay, anything else to discuss? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
One more thing.
To adjourn.
It's been requested, it's been requested that you dress up as Sarathos.
No problem.
For...
No problem. Toy giveaways. I think I even have a suit. I used to be big, remember? I used to eat 380 pounds. I don't know how I feel about that, I'm one something. We'll work it out.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, have a motion by Councilman Reyes, second by Councilman Abaca to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Everybody against? Motion adjourn, motion good. Beating overtime is 7:25 p.m. because I'm getting lost.